Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you join me reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Busino appears absent. Trustee Krasinski?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue, absent. And Clerk Posey here. Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
Thank you. Now we will move on to approval of the agenda. I believe there was a add-on?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. We have one proposed add-on, which is item number 21, request to approve final plan, Clinton Township, Macomb Public Library, North Branch, east side of Broughton Road, south of 25 Mile Road, Section 9, permanent parcel 0829200019. Also, one other thing that we just noticed on the agenda, the second set of public comments says for agenda items only, it should read non-agenda items.
Okay. Anything else from anyone? Additions or deletions to the agenda?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. We now have approval of the bills. As usual, there's two bill runs. If you wish anything removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, if there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both.
Motion by Ms. Nevers. Support. Supported by Ms. Smith, to approve both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The approval of the previous meeting minutes are up for your approval at this time. Those would be from September 25th, 2019. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the previous meeting minutes from September 25th.
Support.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to approve the minutes under consideration. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. The consent agenda items are routine matters that come before the Board frequently. If anyone wishes to discuss an item on the consent, please indicate so.
Madam Chair, hearing nothing, I will move on to approve the consent agendas as presented.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski, seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to public comments. These are agenda items only. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and remember you have a three-minute time limit.
Frank Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. I'm commenting on Agenda Item Number 18, the FOIA Appeal, numbered 2019-211. It's the Kirk and Huth invoice. It was filed under the Freedom of Information Act on behalf of Kathy Western. The, as set forth in the appeal, which is fairly detailed, and hopefully educates and informs the Board of its obligations under FOIA, there needs to be a, if there is an alleged attorney-client privilege that's being asserted, those items need to be separated, and redaction would be the appropriate course rather than just denying the request. I don't believe that attorney-client privilege applies, but in the event that it does, a redacted invoice would be the appropriate response rather than what was received, which was just an invoice with a total and the invoice number on it with the statement subject to attorney-client privilege, I believe. It's all attached. I won't take any more of the Board's time on that. Thank you.
Anyone else? This is on agenda items only. Very well, we will move on to new business. First item is from the Water and Sewer Department, and that's a request to approve the contract modification number three for the 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight requesting that we modify this contract. This will be the third modification. This will be for Pipe Tech. This is in the amount of $14,125.00. Pipe Tech's the company that's doing the cleaning and the TVing through the township this summer. We have some additional work we'd like to see done before they leave town, if you will, and they've done a great job for us, and we're recommending approval of this increase to this amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wanglin?
Hearing none. Madam Chair, I move to approve the contract modification number three for 2019 sanitary sewer cleaning and CCTV investigation.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith, to approve the contract modification. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next request is to approve the replacement of two township water and sewer vehicles. Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you again, Board members. Water and Sewers in front of you tonight requesting to purchase two vehicles, then also sell two vehicles that'll be replaced. The vehicle's list for $30,676.00, which brings the tally for both vehicles to $61,352.00. I might add, these are being purchased through the county bid program from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC.
Thank you. Anyone have any question on these two vehicle replacements?
Hearing none, Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the request to replace the 2011 GMC truck number 113 and 2010 four truck number 104, and purchase two 2020 GMC Sierra 1500 four-wheel-drive regular cab from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC in the amount of $61,352.
Motion by Ms. Posey, support. Seconded by Ms. Nevers, to approve the replacement of two vehicles and to sell the existing vehicles. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Wanglin.
Thank you, Board.
The Engineering Department has a request to approve a pathway abance for 56587 Fairchild Road. Mr. Van Tiffen.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the Board. This is in the area Fairchild between North Avenue and Hagan. There are no other pathways in this area of the township. We have granted other sidewalk advances in this area, and we're recommending approval.
Thank you. Are there any questions? It's pretty routine.
Madam Chair, if there's no questions, I move to approve pathway abance for 56587 Fairchild Road, parcel number 0801176027.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski, support. Supported by Ms. Nevers, to approve this pathway abance. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. Next is a request for authorization for the Township Supervisor to sign warranty deeds for future road right-of-way for Macomb Township-owned properties along Garfield Road, for the Garfield Road Extension Project. Mr. Van Tiffen.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. A number of years ago, the township acquired three pieces of property along the future Garfield right-of-way as part of some utility extension work, water and sanitary sewer. Since the township and the county have entered into the cost-sharing agreement to have Garfield Road extension extended, they have prepared the necessary right-of-way documents to transfer the property from the township to the county to facilitate the road construction. So, we've worked with the county closely and are recommending that the township authorize the supervisor to sign these documents.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Madam Chair, hearing nothing, a motion to authorize Township Supervisor to sign the warranty deeds for the properties owned along Garfield, parcel number 081840010 082010009 and 082010007 for the Garfield Road project.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski, support. Supported by Ms. Smith, to approve this authorization. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Human Resources Department has a request to hire a property appraiser. Mr. Assorti.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, in connection with fulfilling the open spot left by retirement in the assessing department, the Board authorized the Human Resources Department to recruit for the position of property appraiser. The Human Resources Department received seven applications. Of those five candidates were invited to interview with the selection committee on September 30th. The selection committee of the supervisor, clerk, and treasurer, Mr. Hickey and Ms. Nicholson, were, are recommending a candidate for hire, and so with that, I ask for a motion to approve Arlene Bagley for hire contingent upon successful completion of post offer pre-hire physical exam, drug and alcohol screening, background check, and psychological exam, with an effective hire date on or after October 21, 2019.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Arlene Bagley for hire contingent upon successful completion of the post offer pre-hire physical examination and such.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, to approve the hire of this property appraiser. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Under general counsel, we have a consent judgment regarding sidewalk easement. Mr. Assorti.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, in connection with the 2017 pathway gap closure program, there were several properties in which the township was required to file condemnation proceedings on. That was approved previously by the Board. This attached proposed consent judgment allows the township to obtain the easements needed to complete the sidewalk installation without any further litigation on the matter involved. So with that, I'd ask for a motion to authorize Matthew Zaleski, who is our acting counsel, to execute the attached consent judgment on behalf of the township.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, upon the recommendation of legal, authorize Matthew Zaleski to execute the attached consent judgment on behalf of the township.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve the consent judgment as stated. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Number 18 is a FOIA appeal, 2019-211. Mr. Assorti.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, Mr. Cusmano, as he's indicated previously, submitted an appeal to his FOIA request numbered 2019-211 pursuant to the statute that's included in your package, MCL 15.240. Mr. Cusmano has two opportunities at this point. He can commence a civil action, or, under subsection A, he can submit to the head of the public body a written appeal that specifically states the word "appeal" and identifies the reason or reasons for reversal of the denial. The way that we've handled these in the past is that we've, because the Board as a whole is, has been treated as the head of the public body, the last time we had one of these under our procedure, policy and procedure we have in place for FOIAs, we've given the individual the opportunity to address the Board and the Board to ask questions. We do that in an open forum because the Board is acting as a whole. So with that, we've done, this is what we've done in the past. I was asked when this was put on to put it on the agenda, and which I've done. So at this point, what we've done in the past is present Mr. Cusmano with the opportunity to address the Board regarding his appeal, and then, and then the Board is required to do one of three things. Reverse the disclosure denial, issue a written notice to the requesting person upholding the disclosure denial, or reverse the disclosure denial in part and issue a written notice to the requesting person upholding the disclosure denial in part. I've sent you all a confidential memorandum earlier this week about some of these proceedings, and that's what I have.
Thank you.
So it'd be appropriate, Mr. Cusmano, to address the Board at this point if he so chooses.
Mr. Cusmano, do you want to speak to the Board? You have an opportunity to do so.
I have, Madam Chair, I have nothing.
Please come to the podium.
Frank Cusmano, appearing on behalf of Kathy Western. Madam Chair, members of the Board, I have nothing to add to the fairly detailed appeal that was submitted, which explains the position of Ms. Western. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Board directly, however, we do not feel it's necessary at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any of the Board members have questions?
Just, Madam Chair, for legal. Tom Bean, we have two members of the Board not here. Can we table this until the next meeting?
You're supposed to take action. I guess if, we need to take action on this. The way the Board's treated, the way the statute says is that you have to take action within the next immediate meeting. The way that the township's always treated this is that, you know, the next available agenda deadline for the next meeting, and so it's been some time since he did submit this appeal. So, there is, under unusual circumstances, issue a notice extending 10 business days to extend an answer. I guess that's something that the Board could deal with, with Mr. Cusmano, whether or not that would be acceptable. Nothing would prohibit all of the parties from extending the time period, unless Mr. Cusmano feels otherwise.
Madam Chair, on advice of counsel, Ms. Western would not object to having this matter put over for, till the next meeting. Thank you.
Very well.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion to move this to the next meeting, which will be on the 23rd of October.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just would like to ask a question of Trustee Krasinski. Why do you feel it's important for the other two members to be here for this?
Just the full Board, that's all. Nothing more than that.
But we've just voted on millions of dollars' worth of stuff with only, with two members missing, but we can't vote on this particular item with two members missing?
Well, I can go ahead and change it. It doesn't bother me. I was just trying to give the two members that are not here just an opportunity. If not, I will withdraw my motion. I'll make a motion not to release the bill itself and leave it as a client privilege. That's my motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
I'll support that.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, to withhold the FOIA request until, no, we're not postponing.
Uphold the denial. Uphold the denial.
Uphold the denial. Right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Under Supervisor's office, we have a resolution for supporting Small Business Saturday. For several years now, the Township Board has adopted this resolution, supporting small business owners in Macomb Township. This resolution urges the residents of our community to support small businesses on Small Business Saturday. This year, it's on November 30th, falling between Black Friday and Cyber Monday. Thank you. Any questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, hearing no motion, I will go ahead and make a motion to supporting small businesses this Saturday.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve this resolution. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn.
Yes.
This resolution is adopted. The next one is a drain maintenance grant for Deer Creek Drain. If you remember, last year, we approved the southern part of this Deer Creek. It's where it always floods really bad on 24 North Avenue, and the grant that this was performed under has been extended for another six months at least. So the Macomb County Drain Office came and asked if we would be willing to participate again, and this would be going from 24 Mile Road north to the township border. The expected cost is $10,000, and the Macomb County Public Works Office will match the community portion and pay the remaining $10,000. I spoke with Mr. Goiki, who is the gentleman in charge of the project, and he said he really didn't think it would cost $10,000, but just to be on the safe side, that's what they're asking for. Any questions?
So the motion is to go ahead and approve, to go ahead and clear Deer Creek Drain? I'll make that in form of a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey, to approve this project. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Under Planning Department, this was the add-on, and this is a request to approve the final plan for Clinton Macomb Public Library North Branch. Mr. Van Tiffen.
Yes, ma'am, Chairperson, members of the Board. The Clinton Macomb Public Library has received all of the permits and approvals that are necessary to start construction on the site. They have submitted their final plan to the township for approval. The Town Center Committee met on September 19th and to review all of the department's comments, and we're recommending that the Township Board approve the final plan so that they can start construction.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I'm motion to approve the final plan for the Clinton Macomb Public Library.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers, to approve this final plan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Now we move on to public comments. This is on non-agenda items. Come to the podium, state your name. Remember, you have three minutes.
I am Julianne Cusmano, 16188 Jenny Drive. Four weeks ago, when I arrived at the meeting late, the back door was locked. I stood there for 15 minutes waiting for people that I've texted in the audience to come let me in. I walked around the front and got in. Today, my husband and I parked in the front. The front doors are locked. This is, this is a meeting where the public is supposed to be coming into, and the door should be open. So somebody needs a look into that. Sometimes when we leave, only one is, one door in front is open. That's fine, but nothing is open tonight.
Thank you.
My name's Kenneth Brod. I live on Rebecca Drive in Macomb, Macomb Hill Sub. I've been there 25 years, and my water bills have been about $190 to $200 a quarter. I just got a $504 water bill. Now, I think I'm being penalized because I watered my grass a little bit, not a lot, because I didn't want it to be so high, but I'm trying to keep my property nice in the township. And this is ridiculous. And I've talked to other people. We have two people in our house. We don't have a swimming pool, we don't have a hot tub, and my water bill went from $196 to $504. And I want to know why we can't have a separate meter for our sprinkler systems. Other communities have it. This is ridiculous. What can be done with it? I also understand that this is the old rate, that the rates are going up, so the next bills are going to be higher. What's going on with it? I need, I, I'd like to get some sort of answers on this, and what our options are coming to the water, through the water systems.
Mr. Wanglin, I hate to put you on the spot, but could you talk to him and get his information after the meeting?
Madam Chair, if I may, how do you spell your last name, sir?
B-R-O-T-Z.
B.
B.
I added a K. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
John Parkinson. So, I have a couple of comments. First one is, in my opinion, that you should move the public comments on agenda items to just below, or just before, the public comments on non-agenda items, only because after you guys discuss more agenda items, you have this public comments on non-agenda items only. So with that said, y'all just voted to, well, some of you just voted to deny this appeal for this FOIA request. Last meeting, y'all, I think it was almost unanimous that you all vetoed or denied Trustee Krasinski's motion to keep that attorney-client privilege. Y'all denied that. Okay? So now you're trying to uphold a denial for a FOIA request that should be made public. I would implore you to make that public. What are you guys hiding? What's so important that we can't see that itemized bill? Really? What's so important? If it's not attorney-client privilege, and you guys voted that it wasn't, let us see the bill. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Western, also commenting about the denial of FOIA appeal, 2019 to 11. I will say for members of the public watching this, who depend upon the Board of Trustees' packet, which is uploaded online, that there was a detailed, six-page appeal submitted, but it was not included in the board packet and was not online, which strikes me as a curious omission. Also to comment on the water bills, there is a great deal of confusion about this retroactive increase, and if I heard you correctly, the last meeting is retroactive to July 1. Residents have questions about how you can reto, retroactively increase that rate, and also with the most recent water bill, which contained a lot of the summer outdoor irrigation, people are confused about was the most recent water bill containing the increase you voted at the last meeting? I'm sorry, Treasurer Goodhue isn't here tonight since she, her office issues the water bill, but perhaps her deputy, Mr. DeAndrea, could speak to that tonight. but perhaps her deputy, Mr. DeAndrea, could speak to that tonight. Otherwise, it was not made clear at that last meeting how and when the retroactive amount would be billed. Third item, last May 8th, about five months ago, the full board was present for a meeting that lasted nearly four hours. At the start of that meeting, the agenda item to discuss how you would go about conducting the performance evaluation of Thomas Assorti was moved from open session to closed session. You entered closed session at 8:30 PM and did not emerge for over two hours. When you did emerge, the motion you enacted included this one, quote, "Motion by Posey, seconded by Krasinski, to execute the performance review of HR Director/Legal Counsel as discussed", end quote from the minutes. This passed unanimously, so could you tell us now, five months later, if this performance review has actually been conducted as it is stipulated in its contract, that it would be done annually? And I believe we are approaching the three-year mark of this contract, and it's never been done. An update would be appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Frank Kuzmato, 16188 Jenny Drive. I was reviewing some emails that I had sent out back in 2010 regarding the water bills, so I'm a senior alumni of the support group about complaining about that. I won't explore that anymore on this, in this venue. But I think it's very important that all the options be left open, and you have to have competition, at least the threat of competition. And if you don't, with all due respect to the officers of the Macomb County Sheriff's Office, which do a tremendous job, you're going to be ratcheted up early because you have no other choices, no other options, whether it's Macomb County Sheriff's Police Department, or the garbage contract, which there is other options, and the garbage contract, which is being negotiated, I understand, by another subcommittee. But the water is very, very important, that there be some elements of competition involved there. I was going to speak about the request for proposals and how bids are wildly varying, and how there must be a better way. And then it evolved into a commentary about how Dino Bucci was able to finagle or invegle the $66,000 rich bid and corruptly take that money. Now, I've done a FOIA request, asking for all correspondence and communication with government officials regarding recovery of funds for the township. And I received a response. I did that in June of 2019. I received a response, and it did confirm this recovery of the $66,000. But Dino Bucci's indictment of November 15, 2017, talks about him and Serantino engaging in a $30,000 bribe scheme, where Mr. Bucci was paid $30,000, and also talks about that it was pay-for-playing campaign contributions. Well, before this meeting, I was able to pull Dino Bucci's last report for his committee and see that he's paid himself back already, $20,541.91, according to the last report from his committee. So I would either, there's a defect, and the FOIA response was incomplete, in case the board or the Macomb Township has made petition to the federal government and other law enforcement agents for restitution for all the monies owed by Serantino, Bucci, and/or any campaign run by Dino Bucci. Thank you.
Anyone else? Not seeing anyone. We will move on to trustees' comments.
Madam Chair, I would just like to make a comment about the water bill. I live alone and turned off my sprinkling system because we had so much rain, and my bill was $563, so I feel your pain. But it was explained at our last meeting that even though we don't have one drop of water brought into our home, there are fixed costs that, that we must pay for, and that is, it was fully explained at the last meeting. And so when I opened mine, that was culture shock too, so that's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, if I may, something from Ms. Posey. How are you doing on absentees? Are they coming in?
On absentees.
Have we had an increase of absentee?
Oh, from the, for the mail-in?
Yeah, mail-in.
Yeah, we're up to close, we're reaching, just, we're right under 2,000 right now in responses.
Really?
Yeah. So we've increased significantly. Not absentee, it's to be put on our absentee voter list.
Right, right. That's what I meant.
That's okay.
That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Smith?
I have nothing to add.
2,000.
Very well. Treasurer's comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick to Ms. Western, we don't actually do in the treasurer's office the billing. All the billing is done in the water and sewer. We do the actual collection. We explain a little bit to the residents that come in, but all that is handled through Mr. Wranglin's department. So that's the one that probably would have a little bit of answers for you. Treasurer Goodhue did want me to remind the residents that the last day to make a payment for their past due water bills is the 31st of October. After that, the past due amount will be transferred to the winter tax bill with an additional penalty. You can pay that bill in person in treasurer's office from 8:00 to 4:30, or you can go on our website under online payment systems and make a payment. The treasurer's office just implemented a new online payment system to assist the residents with their water bills. So this should help on these big bills. The residents now are able to set up weekly or monthly any amount to be deducted from their checking or savings account at no charge to the resident. This can only be accomplished, though, through the website on our online bill system. The treasurer's office can answer any questions to the residents, and I can assist any resident. I'll be offered that, my services, to assist any resident in setting up their plan. My extension is 2226, and I'll be more than happy to help the residents. Another comment also, we're in the ending part of the audit, and I just wanted to say it's going very well. I want to thank the Finance Director, Stacy Smith and her team of Crystal and Amy. Amazing job. They did an excellent job with the audit, and I want to thank them, as well as our treasurer's office with the leadership of Karen Goodhue, Sharon, Melissa, and Amy, and also Nancy do a great job in helping with the process. So great job to everyone with the audit. It's almost done with Plant Moran, and it's going well. Finally, I do want to mention something. I don't get a chance to talk much, so this is kind of good, because I like to give recognitions, and I think a recognition needs to go out to Mr. Dan Hickey and his assessing team of Kim, Peter, Carol, and Cindy. Oftentimes, they're the first contact at the township, and they meet the residents first. They do a great job. Their customer service is amazing. I see it every single day, and I'm really proud to be part of that team on that side. They help make the residents feel welcome and make sure that the township is a friendly place and a great place to live. So thanks, all you do to make the township great, Dan. And that's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Clerk's comments?
I would just like to comment with regards to FOIA. Since I am the FOIA coordinator, I believe that there was no reason we couldn't provide the document in an effort to comply with FOIA at a minimum redacted. Legal counsel was quoted saying it's common practice for an invoice to be stamped attorney-client privilege. However, we had an invoice from an employment attorney regarding an investigation with an employee, and the invoice was not stamped attorney-client privileged. And we, as the FOIA coordinator, released the document without a denial. So I believe that there's no reason that we had to deny this request. We do our best to comply with FOIAs to the best of our ability. We do go under the advice of counsel as well, and I just believe that this part was unnecessary. As for the question with regards to the evaluation, I have questioned the progress of the evaluation due to that motion and the execution of it, and I have not received a response to date. That's all I have.
Thank you. Under my comments, just to follow up with Ms. Posey, I sent around a questionnaire to all of the board members. The only one I received reply from was Ms. Posey. So I have been extremely busy. I've been without even a secretary since last November. So we're just starting with the new deputy supervisor to catch up on things. So if the board members would like to send me their answers to the questionnaire, I would be glad to do the assessment of Mr. Assorti's performance. That's all I have. We have one item to discuss in closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Krasinski.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to adjourn to closed session. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Krasinski?
Yes.
Trust clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
We are adjourned to closed session. We have returned from closed session. There was one item discussed. Are there any motions in this regard?
Madam Chair, we'd like to make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the settlement agreement as discussed.
Motion by Ms. Posey, seconded by Mr. Krasinski, to authorize the supervisor to sign the document. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries, and we are adjourned.